Good evening, I would like to call the June meeting of the Auburn Planning Commission to order. We could have roll call, please.
Dana Camp.
Here.
Nonnette Reese.
Here.
Robin Bridges.
Here.
Warren McCourt.
Here.
Bob Ritenbach.
Here.
Wendy Birmingham.
Here.
David Wisdom.
Here.
Joseph A. Stroop. Field Chancellor.
Here.
Thank you. Before we start, I'd like to give a brief overview of the process of the public meeting of the Auburn City Planning Commission. The commission will be presented with agenda items by city planning department. Representative for each agenda item will have an opportunity to make comments and or answer specific questions from the commission. Then the public hearing will be open, and as appropriate, this will be an opportunity for you to address the commission about an agenda item at hand. We want everyone to be heard, and I ask that you please keep your time to five minutes. Please keep your comments relevant to the case at hand. After everyone has spoken, I'll close the public hearing, and representative and staff will have an opportunity to answer any questions and respond to any issues brought up during the hearing. I will open the floor to commissioners for discussion, motion, and a vote, and the commissioners will vote based on state and local laws, as well as City Comprehensive Plan 2030, and for the good of the community. Having summarized the basics of the Planning Commission hearing and voting process, I'd also like to summarize our role and responsibility related to the approval of subdivision plats. By Alabama statute, the Municipal Planning Commission, such as ours, is final approval authority for subdivision plats. Within regards to subdivision plats, the commission acts as an administrative body and is bound by the limitations contained in state laws, city zoning ordinance, and subdivision regulations previously adopted by the commission. While public hearings are required on each plat, and we welcome any and all public comment and concerns on these items, please understand that the commission's authority is strictly limited to confirming that the plat meets or exceeds the specific requirements codified in laws and regulations previously described. If you do intend to please speak at any public hearing this evening, please sign in and state your name and address for the record. Finally, I would like to make a point specifically for the public in attendance. The Planning Commission is only an advisory board to the city council, except in the case of subdivision decisions, which we are charged with making the final decision. All other decisions will be made at the city council post-planning commission position. Thank you. I'd like to have an option for anyone who would like to speak in citizens communication at this time. This is for any persons wishing to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no one, we will move forward. We do not have any old business, but we do have a consent agenda that is packet meeting minutes for May 6, regular meeting minutes for May 9, annexation of 2042 Bonnie Glenn, and the final plat for Oak Creek, first addition. Commissioners?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and second for the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move to new business. Preliminary plat for Heritage Ridge.
Alright.
For cotton.
Thank you. Alright, so for, the applicant is seeking a preliminary plat approval for Heritage Ridge for a 48-lot performance subdivision. Current zoning is development district housing with a PDD overlay. Recommendations for approval with staff comments? So this is a 48-lot performance residential subdivision on 76, roughly 76 acres. This density would be about .6 zoning units an acre. This proposed density is aligned with the trajectory of this development. This is the final phase of the Tuscanie Village PDD. The biggest comments I kind of want to draw y'all's attention to is a plan dedicating the open space to the city, still needs to be determined and executed. There's just kind of some discussions that we still need to have internally, and so some that we need to figure out just kind of by the final plat. Then we did get considerable communication with this item, and I do want to address that before we open up the public hearing. I turn it over to you for any comments, or if you just give me, or any questions, if you just give me a second. So Heritage Ridge Bald Eagle's Nest statement from the city regarding the Bald Eagle's Nest present on the site. So this week, we did receive a lot of communications about this, a lot of concerns, a lot of emails, and also pictures verifying the presence of eagles nests on the site. So this week, I'm going to read this verbatim. So this week, we are provided with information regarding the location of a bald eagle's nest on the property, which is the subject of this application. This information has been shared with city officials and with the city administration, including the city manager and the city attorney's office. The city is aware of the protections put in place by federal law for these nests. Those protections apply directly to the landowner, and the federal government has a wide array of tools that it can use to ensure the landowner's compliance with these protections. The city does not have jurisdiction to enforce these protections, rather, the federal government and the agencies the federal government specifically designates have the sole authority to enforce these protections. Further, the question of whether or not to approve the landowner's application to subdivide this property is not impacted by the location of the bald eagle's nest. The process of subdividing property is, in its essential terms, approving new legal boundaries for features on a piece of property, such as individual lots and internal roadways. The approval of a subdivision plat by the planning commission is simply a confirmation that the new legal boundaries proposed by the landowner meet the city's subdivision regulations. Once approved, it would be up to the landowner to ensure that the process of developing this property complies with the federal protections put in place for the bald eagle's nest on this property. In summary, the city recognizes that there are protections put in place for the bald eagle's nest on the property in question, but those protections do not impact the planning commission's review of the application to subdivide this property.
Nor does the action of the planning commission obligate the feds to make any changes in their regulations.
Correct, correct. So then with that, I'll turn over to you for any questions.
Thank you. Is the applicant in attendance? Okay, at this time, this does require a public hearing. I would like to open that at this time for anyone who wishes to speak on the Heritage Ridge subdivision.
This is the first time I've ever seen you live. I've only seen you streaming. Y'all look a lot better live, by the way, than streaming. My name is Dr. Matt Durkoltz, PhD economist. I live at 2096 Lamb Lane, an adjacent property to this property here. I just wanted to give information that I reported the Eagle's Nest on January of 2021. To, right now, I had a response today from Mercedes Maddox, non-game wildlife biologist, Alabama Wildlife and Fisheries Division in Country Road Prepville, Alabama. That is the regional responsibility for the wildlife management. As an economist, I'm for property rights. Property rights have an inherent responsibility in how you use that property, which means that you have to obey the local and federal regulations for that. So I just wanted to have on record that this is reported. This was originally put in the Bald Eagle Nest location database in 2021. It is being reviewed and updated, and is of an email today from Mercedes Maddox. And if it's not the responsibility of the city, and if it's not the responsibility to make sure of, whose responsibility is it to make sure that the developer-builder adheres to the federal regulations? And if we don't know, then I'll ask the audience to say, who do we want to put a commission to make sure that those regulations are adhered to? Now, the federal government finds out that there's not a violation, there's not a problem, I'm okay with that. That's a property rights side. I just want to make sure. So do you have any answer to that question? Whose responsibility is it to make sure that the developer adheres to the federal regulations? Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Don't forget to sign in, please. Anyone else who would like to speak?
So I guess I just want to add, since we have a considerable amount of public hearings tonight, it's okay if everybody wants to ask questions during the public hearing, but we will answer any questions after the public hearing is closed. It doesn't really, it's really disorderly to kind of go back and forth just kind of in the middle of the public hearing. So we'll wait till the public hearing is over to answer any questions that were asked during the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Good evening, I'm Mitrae, and I'm one of the adjacent property owners, 2274 Heritage Ridge. Two questions for you that I'd love to see addressed. One, the adjacent wetlands, what is the city's responsibility to protect the wetlands and the setbacks so that that property is not disturbed? The trees and the fauna that are there within that wetlands and the 20-foot setback of the property side? Second question is, my understanding is the property has extensive granite on top of the hill. In what role will the city play in ensuring that if any blasting has to be done, that the property owners are protected, warned, kept informed, so their quality of life is not impacted as well? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, I'm Richard Freeborn. I live at 2226 Montiano Lane in the Tivoli subdivision. I'm speaking on behalf of the Tivoli Home Owners Association. In looking through the proposed plan, I do, or we do not see any pool involved in that plan. The assumption is that as this is a Tivoli final phase, or was originally Tivoli final phase, that that will become part of the Tivoli HOA responsibility. The pool that we currently have is not adequate for another 48 properties, and so we'd like to know what the developer's plans are to remediate our pool to support that.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Keith Ron. I'm actually adjacent to the property at 2216 and 2210, both those lots right there. We butt up against a contributory. Again, Keith Ron, and I'm with Auburn University in the Building Science Program. And one of the things we always talk about is pre-planning and figuring this out before it gets too far. And the concern about this neighborhood is one thing. It's a unique lot because it's in between two existing subdivisions, which means construction traffic is going to go through either Ashton or ourselves at that same time. That's a big concern, because now the city has just repaved our roads because of, it's been approved that it was finished and everything. Same thing for Ashton, too. So the concern is, is number one, how the builder, and I know this isn't totally your responsibility, is going to handle a construction road that's going to be an independent road going into that subdivision. The other concern that I have where our lot is, is the area 501, which has been designated as a public area, I think, or a green space area. It seems like the engineer's report had a lot of questions about 501 that they were asking the developer to answer and confirm, basically, if that's going to be green space or what's going to build into that point. The other thing is, we've had several, my wife and I have had several conversations with the city. The city has been great, but it floods, basically, back there in the 100-year plane. It's understood, lots are raised up at that time, but the concern is, is when the new neighborhood goes in, same thing, sediment control, what's going to protect that creek? Because, number one, you're going to have a lot of flooding behind those properties right there. And again, some minor flooding takes place there, too. And then it was already mentioned, but I think the other big issue is, is which HOA, or who's going to be in control, basically, at that point. And I think it's really important for the developer to settle these issues before this goes any further. So I guess I would ask the planning board, if possible, to delay their decision until these things can be answered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Vic Davis, Victor Davis. We are on Grazia Way, 164 Grazia Way, and we butt up against that property. My biggest concern is, we already have a traffic speeding problem on our main entrance coming into Tivoli. The police department has been great about monitoring it. They finally, a few months ago, put in a speed hump on there. They just tuck away a speed monitor that tells you how fast you're going in there. And they had it up for about two weeks, maybe a little longer, and they just removed it yesterday or day before. And I'm sure the police department is going to find it has not slowed the speeding. I personally witnessed people setting that thing off and the lights going off on it. It's unbelievable. So my biggest concern is you're creating a neighborhood that's going to make a cut-through from Tivoli to Ashton, which is going to increase traffic tremendously. Ashton residents are going to cut through there because it may be shorter for them to get to their resident, and vice versa. Not to mention the new residents in this, you know, development coming in also. There's a lot of children in our neighborhood. I've already witnessed several near misses. I cringe for the day that it actually happens, and I'm afraid it will eventually. But it's one thing that the police department of Auburn will have to address, is probably adding more speed humps coming into Tivoli. I don't know about it. I know Ashton already has quite a few speed humps. But again, it's my concern when you're adding more to the problem we already have. And we've been dealing with that problem probably close to a year, year and a half, when we started with the police department, you know, trying to get some resolve. Okay?
Hello. My name's Dawn Ron. I live at 2216 Vincente Drive. My husband and Keith spoke, but one of the things that we wanted to mention also is the infrastructure that is established on that property is, I don't know, over 12, 14 years old. If the builder's intending to use that infrastructure, are they going to be checking it to establish its current working order? Will they be putting in new infrastructure? It's clearly just sat there in the elements for a long period of time. And that's also a concern, that it wouldn't be in good working order once they do the addition.
Sorry, can you be a little more specific when you say "infrastructure"? What do you mean?
Yeah, like the drainage pipes that have already been installed. They had run piping there and utility piping, but they had never established the roadways. I believe that the original builder went out of, you know, went under, and then it's been sold off to multiple builders. And so if they intend to use that original infrastructure, we just had to replace the lights in the Tivoli subdivision. Eight lights along the main entrance, and it was because that original builder did not put them into the code that was acceptable to the city. And so it's our concern that those utilities that are currently existing would not be acceptable to the city as well. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this issue? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, are you have questions for staff and/or applicant?
I think we need to answer-
I, I, I think we need to answer some of the questions that the public has just asked. And I think we're going to need the applicant up front, please.
Hello, Brandon Bolt with Bolt Engineering. And I took a few notes while they were making comments. The developer, I feel like, should get with their, their HOA president. And they can discuss the details of, are they starting their own HOA or are they trying to merge? I don't actually have that answer. The open space was, was put in just as a buffer to the adjacent subdivision. No, no plans are intended for it that I am aware of at this time. It's, it's just open space and buffer. The city infrastructure, so the city engineering, we discussed that already. And some of your inspectors have already been out and have given the okay on the infrastructure that was put in place. Were there any other specific questions you would like answered?
Flooding in the construction entrances?
Well, I mean, they're going to have to use the city right of way. There's no access into the property other than that. The flooding, so not only have we used the current FEMA map, we've used the proposed FEMA map that's not even available yet. We pulled the flooding in to where it's going to be when the next study is released. And that's shown on the drawings you have in there.
Well, you say you're going to have to use the city rightaways, which means Arlington Court and then the main drag that comes in through Tivoli. What, what's preventing you from providing access from somewhere else? Like college, let's say, or?
So that would be a massive amount of wetland impact.
Wetlands, okay.
Another question was about blasting.
So the geotechnical reports that we have, we're not getting into the rock. But if they do, the people that perform the blasting are responsible for their own monitoring.
And is there city requirements for that?
I'm not aware. We don't.
Yes.
Are there notification requirements as well?
I'm not sure if there are notification requirements, but they do have to get a permit from our inspection services department that includes seismic graph information.
And you stated you, you don't know because the developer hasn't conveyed to you about whether it's a separate HOA or they're going to be merged with Tivoli's HOA, so?
I don't have that information, but I'm happy to get the person's number that they want them to call and they can meet up and hash it out.
Yeah, and that's not before us tonight, but I would appreciate that. It would go to good graces.
Sure.
I'm not sure if this is really for the applicant so much as that question about how do we know, you know, with, with respect to the bald eagle that's, that's being taken care of? I mean, I've got, since it's a federal, there are federal guidelines that are associated with that. You know, how do we keep that, you know, within the guidelines?
Yeah, so pretty much, I mean, like, the statement just kind of referenced, that's not really the purview of the planning commission. I think we're going to leave that to the federal agencies. And I guess since they were, since I, I'm sorry for getting the person's name who spoke first, but you mentioned that you'd already reported this and that they are aware of this. So our stance is that we're going to leave that to the federal agencies to enforce that. And like I said, to the developer to adhere to that. Just kind of the conversations that we've had already, just kind of internally about this with the applicant is that they are aware of it and they are formulating a plan to address it. Like I said, I mean, that's not on us to inspect. It's on the federal agencies to enforce and inspect, so.
Just wanted to get a little information to the public on that.
As since area 501 and the greens, green space, open space is part of one of your comments, is that the way it would be left or y'all are still negotiating that?
Yeah, so that's something that we're still working on. Actually, we still need to come to an agreement, just kind of how we're going to handle it. Because I think what was initially described in the PDD, I think, just kind of the evolution of the development, I think the needs of the city, we just kind of need to talk about what we, what's going to work going forward. And so that's something that we'll have addressed by the final plat.
Okay. Was there a traffic study required for this?
Not for this phase.
So not for this phase, but overall PDD?
I think we had one during the initial PDD back many years ago.
Initially, did it connect to Arlington?
Did.
Okay. Sorry. Any other questions, commissioners?
I move to approve case FP.
Oh, hold on. I did close. Sorry.
I move to approve case FP, final plat 2024, number seven.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Rock House Farms.
Good afternoon.
If you will pause one second while everyone can file out.
Yeah, I'll wait till everybody wants to. I just kind of put it on order real quick. Was that motion for Oak Creek or was that for Heritage Ridge?
Heritage Ridge. Oh, no, he did say 07.
He did say. I'm sorry.
There we go. There we go. Yeah, we could, we could take that again.
David.
I meant the one before, and I apologize for my mistake. I retract my previous motion and amend my motion to reflect the case we were reviewing at the time.
Which is?
013.
013.
I have a motion. I will second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Sorry about that, y'all.
There you go. Thanks, Chris.
Yes, ma'am. This is Robison.
Yes. This is a request for a revised preliminary plat for Rock House Farms located off of Bridlewood Drive, west of Shelton Mill Road and east of Creekwood subdivision. The previous plat was before you last July for 12 lots. That's the exhibit you see on the screen. That was for 12 lots. This new revised plat is for 16. And the, these three lots have been divided into two. So it's making three additional lots. And then this lot here is also being divided to where it's 16 lots now. It is zoned rural, except for lot 11, which is still in unincorporated Lee County. That was, the property that is in the city limits was annexed last August. It was before you guys, last July, and went to planning, uh, city council in August. The property is accessed from Bridlewood Drive, which is currently in access easement, but on the major street plan as a residential collector. So the street or the easement will have to be improved for this development. All of the lots will access off of that new drive by an internal new access drive leading to the lots. I think initially some thought that there were going to be two access points to the lots, but all of the lots will access via this drive, I think, except for the one that is furthest west. There are a number of comments on the plat. Some of the ones to note are the greenway that's present along Saga Hatchet Creek that crosses through lots 6, 8, 10, and 11. And a greenway easement is required to be placed on top of that greenway. And access from a public right of way also needs to lead to the greenway. The second most notable comment of plannings is to increase the width of the new access easement just to cover drives that will cross over other people's lots. Engineering, the comments, as I mentioned, were the improvements to Bridlewood Drive and improvements to Shelton Mill are required with construction of the project. And Water Resource Management has a couple of comments regarding water quality and fire protection and the possibility of needing to expand the water system out there. And then Lee County has one comment regarding the lot that is not in the city limits, lot 11. And that is, as it's drawn now, it does not meet their requirements. So they have offered two options to remedy that. One is to consolidate that lot with the two additional lots in neighboring Creekwood that are owned by the developer. And that way it would have access because it's then one lot. Or provide a 30-foot stem from this lot down to Bridlewood Drive. And I think that about covers it. We do recommend approval with staff comments. And the applicant is here.
What's the staff's opinion regarding the county request or suggestion?
Either way, it doesn't matter to us. I mean, one of those options has to take place. I think the easiest one would probably be the lot consolidation with the two existing lots.
With, since jurisdiction, with, on that same note, with that lot, does our greenway situation go through that lot as well?
Any other questions?
All right. Applicant, do you have anything you'd like to say at this time? Does require a public hearing? Okay. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for Rock House Farms, if you would like to speak.
Good evening. I'm Michael Goodlett. I live at 1766 Creekwood Trail, which is just west of this. I've lived there for approximately 25 years. I'm a past president of the Creekwood Development Homeowners Association. I rise to speak in favor of this because it's critical to our neighborhood. Bridlewood, as was noted, is a, is a substandard, in my opinion, very dangerous homeowner's lane. And finally, as part of this development, along with the homeowners association, the city of Auburn, it will be upgraded to a city street, which will be much safer for everybody that travels along that path. So I don't think that the increased density is, is, you know, is any substantial consequence given that this will be a city street finally. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Please sign in if you can. Anyone else like to speak about this agenda item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions?
I want to confirm something with Katie. The lot 11 is entirely out of the, out of the city. It's not partially in and partially out. It's?
It's all outside the city limits.
And these, the width of these front make, are in compliance with our flag lot status?
Yes.
Now, it's, it is today.
Currently. As it is written, it is actually not a flag lot. And there's a lot of stipulations to flag lots. So, you know, kudos to them.
But we are working on, in the future, to keep something like this from happening.
Correct.
Yes, okay, yes.
And that's, that's kind of something I want to at least make a point of. You know, while I know this, there was a lot of work done by the city, by this planning commission to come up with some kind of an agreement for this whole area. A lot of stuff, it's going to cost, you know, a lot of money and all that sort of thing. And, and I reckon, I recognize that, again, it's not before this planning commission. But now we see a new subdivision, after all this other work has been done, exacerbating the problem of flag lots and that sort of thing. And it's just, you know, it's really, you know, we, we need to be able, in the future, you know, and on top of that, as I recall, you might have to confirm this, the, you know, I have, I've been here for about 15 years doing this kind of work, and I have never seen so many undone comments in work that had to be completed before we get to this point. 43 different items that are, you know, up in the air right now. So, you know, this isn't really the way to, to do this sort of work. And, but, you know, I'd like to see in the, in the future, again, we're going to remedy the flag lot situation. This only exacerbates that, like I said. But, you know, some, some, especially when we have these kind of agreements, some goodwill from, from the applicants would be really welcome in this sort of situation.
We do need to vote motion otherwise.
Move to approve 2024-016.
With all comments?
With all comments. Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
For this item, the applicant is requesting preliminary plat approval. The applicant is requesting preliminary plat approval for a 16 lot conventional subdivision. The subject property is located in the Links Crossing subdivision west of Mill Creek Road in the Development District Housing DDH zoning district. It is also the former Tiger Spirit Golf Course. The subject property is approximately 4.19 acres. And therefore, the proposed density is 3.82 dwelling units per acre. This came before the body at the December 2022 planning commission. It was the same request, however, the preliminary plat expired this past week, actually, on the 8th of June because of the 18-month, I guess, deadline to complete for final plat. And so they've come around for a second request to allow enough time for them to go through DRT and begin construction. Staff has no concerns with this request and recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Comments and notes?
No major comments and notes, simply notational.
Thank you. The applicant here. This does require a public hearing. I would like to open that now. If anyone would like to come forward on Links Crossing. Seeing no one, closed public hearing. Commissioners, questions, motions?
Move to approve 2024-014.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Preliminary plat for parcels three, four, and five.
For this request, the applicant is requesting a preliminary plat approval for a two-lot conventional subdivision. The subject property is located in unincorporated Lee County at the terminus of Lee Road 4. As you can see, what you're poking at is at this intersection right here.
Okay.
This request is before you because it was originally an administrative subdivision. But county requested that an existing easement shown here be dedicated as right of way for Lee County to give proper frontage for the new lot parcel 340, thank you, while parcel 345 will take access and frontage along Lee Road 616 right here. And so this was upgraded to acquiring planning. And so this was upgraded to acquiring planning commission approval because it is within the planning jurisdiction and approval for right-of-way is needed by y'all. Staff has no concerns with this request and recommends approval.
Okay. Thank you. That's preliminary plat. This does require a public hearing. I will open that now. Anyone has any comments? Seeing no one, closed public hearing. Commissioners?
Move to approve case PP 2024-017.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have a final plat request for the parcel 345.
Yes, this is a final plat for the same subject property. We felt that it did not warrant, you know, having them in separate meetings. So, again, no problems with this request. Recommend approval.
Thank you. Final plat does not require public hearing. Commissioners?
Move to approve FP 2024-006.
Second.
Motion and second. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Asbury Hills. Welcome back.
This request is a revised preliminary plat approval for a 45-lot performance residential subdivision of townhomes, as well as includes request for a waiver to subdivide off of a private street. The subject property is located off Shelton Mill Road, north of East University Drive, in the Comprehensive Development District. This is a revised request from the PP 2024-002 that was approved at the February Planning The change I can skip towards, so on the left, you'll see the previous request, which was 36 townhomes, two open space lots, and one lot for a private street. They have now included more lots to the south and have, are seeking to subdivide that originally lot for future development right here. And so it does not actually increase the density because now using the entire lot for its calculations, the density is 7.3 dwelling units an acre, and open space percentage still met, and it is overall consistent with the future land use plan, and so there are no concerns with this request. And staff comments are simply notational. It is currently in the DRT process, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Thank you.
You want to discuss the waiver?
Yes, thank you for that. So, the waiver was again approved at the February 2024 meeting. Now, it has come back around because there's an additional lot being created with this revised plat, so it'd be, instead of 20 lots off of a private street, it's now 21.
This does require a public hearing. I will open that now for Asbury Hills. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Applicant or questions for staff commissioners?
Yeah, I, for the record, I'd like to, I think we need to get the reason for the waiver request, which we granted before on the same property, but since it's asked again because of the changes, I think that needs to be in the public record as well. So, he's going to explain it. Okay.
How are you doing? Hey, Ziver, same for group? The waiver was actually something we came to originally in our pre-op meeting a while back, talking with Allison. The city had a preference that we actually have a private street here instead of a publicly maintained street, since there's no opportunities for future stubouts due to streams and things around the perimeter of the property. They actually preferred we did that, and so in order to divide off that private road, it required a waiver.
I just want you on the record.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Or do you want us to do the waiver separate?
Yes. So, so I guess kind of how we need to go is that you would need to approve the waiver and then approve the preliminary plat, because the preliminary plat can't be approved without the waiver.
Right. Okay. Public hearing is done. Any other questions, commissioners, or motions?
I move to approve the request for a waiver to subdivide off a private street in the Asbury Hill subdivision revision of Lot 3.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the waiver. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, for preliminary plat revision.
I move to approve 2024-019.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes. Good evening. This is a request for preliminary plat approval for a 30-lot townhouse development, and it also includes a waiver to allow a private drive to constitute mandatory street frontage. The property is located at 350 Bragg Avenue in the CRDW zoning district. This zoning district was created in 2018 and rezoned these properties along Bragg from RDD to CRDW. And townhouses are permitted use in this zoning district. The plat shows 30 townhouse lots, as well as a lot for commercial development here along Bragg Avenue, and an open space lot. The waiver to subdivide off of a private street, typically when that is requested, the roadway is shown as a separate individual platted lot. The applicant is working out whether it will be platted that way, or if that roadway will be in an easement. It is not, but you could add it. The commercial development would take place in Phase 2 of the development and would add about 4,000 to 6,000 square feet of commercial space. The townhouse lots, there are 22 four-bedroom and eight five-bedroom. These here are five-bedroom, as well as these here along Bragg Avenue. And staff recommends approval of the plat and the waiver.
With comments and the waiver?
With comments, yes.
No, no.
And then Justice is going to present some additional slides for the project.
There you go. So this is kind of the first thing about the plat. Even though I'd like to think, you know, some developers are really generous with open space, the open space lot is a city easement. So that's, that's why it is shaped that way. So if you want to go to the next slide, Tiffany. So this is the current status of the site. You want to go to the next slide? The developer wanted to include just kind of presentation that they'd shared with staff, that way you guys can also kind of see the visual, just kind of what they're planning. Just kind of keep clicking through a little bit. Yeah, so, some visuals. So this is kind of what it would look like. If you just want to stop here, it's fine. So the idea, just kind of from the staff side, is that this was rezoned with the intention for redevelopment. This does meet that, just kind of with the density standpoint. Right now, like I was talking about with the easement, this is a constricted site. And we had an initial pre-op meeting where we identified a lot of issues, where we addressed a lot of issues, and they did reconfigure the site design to accommodate a lot of this. And so one of the main concerns that they had at the outset was the setbacks. And so that was the main concern of like, hey, this does not work unless we can get some flexibility on the setbacks. And so the thought process behind that was that, well, instead of going BZA on this, it would make sense if, you know, like, we've kind of been playing with the idea of private streets. How do we want to handle this kind of, in this one? Can we use it to give some relief on the setbacks? And so that was the idea originally around utilizing the private streets in this scenario. And so over time, just kind of working with this project, staff had a lot of discussion around if we wanted to have a lot of record for the private street, like other developments, or if we wanted the private street to be in easements. And like I said, we had a lot of discussion about it, but I think, as we are still working through it, I think we're leaning towards going away from requiring a lot of record because one of the issues with that is that if there is an existing lot of record that is a road, looks like a road, smells like a road, it can be donated to the city as a public road, which the city does not want. If it is a private, is built as a private street, it must stay as a private street, and that is going to be our position in perpetuity, long after all of us are no longer working here. So with that, I think we kind of came to the conclusion that, I mean, if we can have the private street as access easements, that actually might be better for everyone, just from a longevity standpoint, and then also from the flexibility standpoint. And that's something that we want to incorporate into the subreg conversations that we're going to have on Monday, and that's something that I said, like I said, we've had extensive conversations, we've had extensive conversations about. But generally speaking, I think just for this site, I know it's probably really hard to look at, you know, a street view of future platted lots and kind of, and kind of get a feeling of why staff may support this, but the developer, like I said, included the visuals to just kind of show what they were going for by adding the commercial from the townhomes, adding the density and getting the redevelopment, and also being the first kind of on this side of town, on this section of road with redevelopment. So one of the things that we were going to get also was going to be the streetscape associated with this as well, and a lot of the other aspects of this project. Normally, we handle these things in DRT, where there's a lot of the granular details that we work through before we get to the final plat and have the engineered plans. Just in this scenario, we've been faced with trying to address a lot of those, just kind of at the outset. Normally, we would handle those in DRT. So I just kind of want to provide that clarity, and then also just kind of clarify on the lot of record versus the access easements and where the city stands, we think our preference would be access easements over having a lot of record to donate to the city.
Thank you for that. I do have a question, though. As there have been other projects that have been supported as to be subdivided off a private street, will this look like the same animal as all the others, since our subregs are not done yet?
Yes, and so, whoa, man, my mic got louder. Anyway, so, so the design, everything that we've kind of worked through, one of the big things was the aerial access and the emergency vehicle access. And so the platted width, the width of the streets will be 26 feet wide to accommodate those things, and it will, and it's also to accommodate the driveway parking and the parking needed to accommodate all the bedrooms that this project has. And so this will look like a subdivision. It just will not look like that as it's recorded. And so that was another one of the things of staff's opinion of just, a lot of the discussion was kind of going about how do we record this, and is there a way to record this properly kind of that would comply versus the end product? There aren't a lot of questions on the end product side. It's something that we support, it's something that we would like to see, and it's something that we think we can get answers to. It was just, the main hurdle was looking at how do we record this and get this platted? And so like I said, I think the end product, it will look like a regular subdivision, just townhomes, so.
Tell me a little more about the discussion on the setbacks. So you gave some sort of concession on that, so what is that? Was it, talk to me about that a little bit.
Yeah, so, so I guess not necessarily, so the concession, much more just kind of, we want to offer some of the flexibility to get some of these things, and I think kind of, when the, when we rezone a property to get a certain kind of development, I think it would be odd to then hamstring them, or not provide relief where we can, or, and I think like just the private streets weren't offered as like a get-out-of-jail-free card. It was more of, I think you can play with this, I think there's an option here. And I think what, what we initially thought of what could be, you know, minimum relief, or, you know, maybe, you know, you need one or two feet here, just due to the easement that runs through the property, it ended up going, like, a lot of record would increase the width and put this in an area where we'd lose a lot of lots in this one.
Increasing the density, wouldn't that do away with the need for that?
In some places, yeah. And so, and so I guess like, I mean, if we, if you, Tiffany, if you can go back to the plat. So let's say that they take those, let's say they get rid of the commercial lot and put five of those residential lots there, then the city loses commercial space, which is something that the city doesn't want to do. And so I think, like I said, I mean, there's a lot of things about this site from the easement going through it to the redevelopment. I think, I think there's a lot of things that kind of, from our standpoint, things that we could get, things that we could work with. I just think for this, the private trees are offered as a possibility for flexibility. That was really it.
So you think it's in the public's best interest, then you get a better project?
Yes.
Are these V simple units?
Correct.
Just kind of, just kind of happened in the last item we were talking about, and I just, you know, we're bound by law and all that kind of stuff to approve if it meets, right? So this doesn't meet, it needs a waiver. The last one didn't meet, needs a waiver. You know, I kind of wonder if we're approaching these things in a, you know, within our boundaries in our guidelines, but just, just a thought.
Well, I don't, but we have, we have brought that up before, and that is to be clarified by next month's meeting, and Monday's meeting.
For the, right, for the private.
Private drive.
But I think we're, one of our main responsibilities is looking after the public interest, and is the public interest better met with some flexibility here, even though we could be rigid and hold it firm? But is it in the public's best interest that we grant that waiver? I think that's what we're having a look at.
Okay.
Can we pull up the?
Oh, I'm sorry. We haven't done the public hearing yet.
We're debating already.
This does require a public hearing as preliminary plat. If anyone would like to speak on this agenda item. Lot of pre-comment, so we'll close the public hearing and move forward, commissioners.
Can we pull up what the, what the lot looks like right now?
Yes, I guess just click out a little bit.
Emotions.
I've got a question for the applicant. How many units could you fit in the easement area if it wasn't there?
They come with a microphone?
Yes, please.
Roach the bitch.
I had to ask. You were just looking me in the eye. I just want to make sure. Lee Tharp, cadre engineering, civil engineering on the project, representing the applicant. The, it's a little over a half an acre, I think, so, I don't know, if we were to reconfigure everything, wedging units in there, probably five.
Could you, if you didn't have it there, could you do what you want to do as presented without subdividing off private streets?
Believe so, yes.
Okay. And that waivers for the benefit of the city utilities, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Just, just wanted to.
I was going to say, I'm here to answer questions, but I think we've already gone through all that, so, yeah, anything else, just.
Thanks. Thank you.
Questions, comments, commissioners? We have a waiver and then a preliminary plat.
I'll move to approve the waiver for 2024-020.
I have a motion and a second on the waiver. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And on the preliminary plat?
Move to approve PP, case PP 2024-020, Uptown 1.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Heinz Hall.
This is a request for preliminary plat approval for an eight-lot subdivision in the planning jurisdiction. It's located on Lee Road 188, and you can see here, it's located outside of the city limits. It's about a mile northwest of the existing city limits, down here. This exhibit shows the property's location in regards to the optimal boundary, which is the same delineation as the city limits, so it's about half a mile within the city's planning jurisdiction. This is the proposed plat, eight lots. No major comments. Lee County did note that lots four and five here will have a shared access, and seven and eight will share access as well. And in 2024, this property was subdivided from a large tract here across the street. I did receive one email of correspondence, and they were asking about covenants for the property and for the subdivision, and what would be done to protect the stream on the property, and I believe the applicant will address that.
Applicant, do you want to speak now or after public hearing?
Do you have to answer any questions?
This does require a public hearing. I'll open that now.
This does require a public hearing. I'll open that now, on Heinz Hall. Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing, commissioners? Oh, I'm sorry. I am so sorry. We'll open that back up. Can you please come forward?
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Walter Money. My eyes aren't so good. I can't read that.
It's tough.
Was asking if you had a copy. That's not the right one. That's not the eight lots, subdivision.
State your address, sir, your address.
Uh, I live at 906 Stage Road in Auburn, but my property is at 9950 Lee Road 188. I am the southern boundary, uh, property owner. It's still tiny. I have a question about what this.
You're right here.
Yeah, it's, it's tiny, and, and there's. When I met the surveyors out there, they were doing a really good job. I worked for a surveyor for nine years. I came to my northwest property corner, which they found. They had to find a metal detector to dig it up, because the neighbors had driven over it with a backhoe and broken it off. And I stuck the top part, broken off part, next to the fence, where they began to dig all around the fence. But they got the metal detector and located it, and it's about two and a half feet from the fence. And then they put a pin between the existing corner, which is on the lot line. It's on the section line that continues north. This section line continues north. They put another pin between the existing corner and the fence, and I, I called them, whoever it was, the Barrett. I don't know, the surveyors, I called them up and asked them, and the guy that I spoke to said he would have to get in touch with his field people and call me back, and he never did. So really, I have two questions. One, what is that pin that they set? And why didn't they use the existing corner, which is the section line? It's on the section line. Can't make a jog on the section line, I don't think. And second, are you, when you approve this plat, is this gonna become within the city limits? I, I don't, I don't, I don't see how that's, I, I don't understand how that works.
This is just within our plan, planning jurisdiction. We don't, we're, we're not asked to annex or anything at this point.
Okay, you're not annexing anything. That's, that's my other question. I just didn't understand. But the question, the really, what is that pin? What'd they do? I worked for the surveyor. When you find a pin in the field, use it.
Use the pin.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we will try and put you in touch. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing again. Applicant, can you help us with this survey situation?
Blake Rice, Barrett Simpson Engineering. No, I cannot.
Your shirt says.
I'm going to need to get with my staff. Um, I, I don't know e- each, each pin that is located. Um, I, I will have to get with, um, all, all the surveyors in my office and find out what went on. Um, what I can tell you is, uh, the, the plat is not to be recorded tonight. The plat is to hopefully be approved. Um, I will check into this and see, uh, there are a lot of reasons that, um, a pin can be damaged. Um, it can be a pin that was set by some previous surveyor that doesn't follow the original section line. It cannot follow evidence of existing property ownership, fence lines, things like that. There's a lot that goes into it. I'm gonna have to check into it with my staff.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any other questions for the applicant, or anybody else?
I'll move to approve 2024-008.
Two one.
Two one.
Two one.
Oh, another wrong one. Sorry. Wait, my pages are out.
Number 10.
My packet's out of order. I will correct that motion to move to approve 2024-021.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, this next request is just for the final plat approval for the eight lot subdivision you just approved, on Lee Road 188.
Move to approve FP 2024-008, final plat.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And my next case before you tonight is for preliminary plat approval for a 43 lot performance residential development. Includes 39 single-family lots, two open space lots, one outlot, and one lot of remnant property. And it's going to be, um, Memm's Trail 14th Edition within the Summit PDD, and it's located east here of Memm's Trail Road. The plat, um, has a density of three dwelling units an acre, which, um, is within the limits for, um, an PDD with LDD underlying. Um, the open space requirement is 20% for this phase, and the applicant does exceed that requirement. Staff recommends approval with comments. Um, no major comments. Um, probably the one with, with most importance is engineering's comment that recommends, um, the ends here of Shackbark Lane and Rutland Road be connected. Sorry, that was about the name of the street. I apologize. Recommend connection, okay. This is a preliminary plat and does require a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing for Memm's Trail Subdivision 14th Edition. Anyone would like to speak on that? We will close the public hearing. Oh, oh, I'm so sorry. This, I can't see. I'm so sorry.
My name's Jim Hildreth. I need to make the clarification. Is this on Memm's Trail Road, County Road 10? Or is this Memm's Trail subdivision, which I understand is totally separate?
Subdivision.
So it's not Memm's Tr- Memm's Trail Road on County Road 10?
No.
Got it?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can we get your, can we get your name and address? Sorry, since you spelled yeah.
I've signed in already. I'm Jim Hildreth. It's 3500 Sand Hill Road.
Thank you.
I will, um, close the public hearing, seeing no one else. I have a question. Is the applicant here? Oh, okay. Do you have concerns about connecting the two cul-de-sacs?
I'm Ben Young, Forsyth Group. Well, uh, there, there may be some ways to do it. You know, we, we, um, have had a few meetings with the city about, um, this area, and that was not something that was brought up, but it's something that we could look into. You know, it being at the very back end of the development, uh, you know, there's, I don't think a huge concern with a large volume of people having to go down there and turn around. So, um, we thought, you know, cul-de-sacs were appropriate.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, that was my question. Do you have questions, commissioners, for, um, applicant on this project?
I'll move to approve PP 2024-022, Memm's Trail Subdivision 14th Edition.
Subject two.
Subject two, all comments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, so the applicant is seeking a preliminary plat approval for Woodward Oaks Phase 7, uh, 80 lot performance subdivision. Uh, it's located, uh, just probably north of, uh, Jamesburg Parkway. Current zoning, uh, development district housing with a PDD overlay. All right. Yep, so. Yep, so this is a 80 lot performance, uh, subdivision, and this is the Phase 7 of the Woodward Oaks PDD. Uh, in the staff report, I think I put that this was the last residential phase of the subdivision, but that is incorrect. There are going to be two more phases. There are 105, uh, I guess, units left still to build out. I guess you want to go to the, is there another one? Yeah, there we go. All right, so this one has a unit count on it. And so if you look at the purplish area where it says future development, that's where the 105 lots are slated to go, right down here. No, go back. What's happening? All right, there you go. All right. So, so, yeah, yeah, so Phase 7, uh, that's where the 80 lot performance subdivision is, and the future development is where the future, uh, where the 105 remaining lots are slated to go. The only comments that we got that were of note were that, uh, not of note of the comments section, but just the complaints and communications we got from citizens were that there's a lot of concern just kind of around the status of the trails, access to the trails, are they going away? Are they going to be maintained? And so I talked with the applicant, and one of the things that's going on is really just kind of the growing pains of construction at the moment. Uh, backhoes need to get places, you know, the machinery needs to get places, and so right now, some of the trails are inaccessible. And so their idea of, about mapping the trails and kind of putting their permanent identifiers about where they're going to be will take place after the construction is permanently in place. And so that will be once they finish Phase 7 and everything that kind of butts, uh, the Soga Hatchet Creek. And so then at that point in time, they will then provide the city with where the trails are, and there'll be an accurate, an accurate representation of the trails, uh, that are to meet the exchange at the front end of the PDD. And so like I said, so this is Phase 7, and there are slated to be approximately two more phases, um, but 105 units are what's left for them to build out. So then with that, I'll turn over to you for any questions.
All right, now, can I ask a question, Jim? The, so what's the timetable he has for finishing these, to put the trails in? These people that are already living in that area were induced, perhaps, to buy it there because of those trails. And when will those trails be available to them to use?
Yeah, so, so that'd be something, uh, I think the applicant can answer, they had a timeline.
You want to do it now or after public hearing? Let's wait for public hearing, just to make sure. I'll open the public hearing now, if you'd like to speak on Woodward Oaks.
We may have to extend that clock, though. I would like to echo the, the, uh, comments there. Phase 7, I don't think is supposed to be completed until much further in the future. We do frequent the trails and use them quite often.
I'm sorry, your name and address.
I'm sorry, Robert Hodgson, 806 Clear Spring Drive, um, in the Woodward Oaks community. We do frequent those, uh, trails quite often, so not having access is, you know, it's kind of a pain in the rear, and I appreciate you, Mr. Warren, uh, speaking to that. Phase 7, you know, they're on Phase 4, 4B right now, and they haven't even completed that. So I mean, we're talking, as fast as this group moves, it's gonna be a while. So, I mean, it's kind of frustrating. We, we're in communication with them, but it's one of those things where if we're basing their action, or any future action, off our current experience, there won't be any action. Plus, the guys and volunteers that built those trails, they were not the developer. They did GPS all the trails that were provided to the city. Those GPS coordinates, from what I understand, were also provided to the developer. There was no prior communication, hey, we're gonna go work through this and, you know, sit down with us, help us map this thing out, you know, like an, like a, I guess, uh, I want to say an intelligent developer, but just someone who cares about the community, so to speak. Uh, so I mean, it, it's quite obvious. On the GS comments for the, um, the paperwork that we have here, lots 470 and 472 are open space. If so, please label as such. We'd like to echo that comment, as well as, uh, GIS comment number four. Additionally, if I, I'm not an expert at reading these drawings, but when I read some of the easement measurements on here, it says that an easement will be provided between, I think it's 468 and 440, and it says 10-foot access easement, but comment number five states that if a structure is to be built in that area, then it's gotta be have like, it's gotta be a 12-foot wide gate. I don't know how you fit a 12-foot wide gate in a 10-foot space. Again, I'm not an expert on reading drawings, so I mean, I may, I may have that, may have misconstrued that. Additionally, it doesn't, it's not obvious that there's access to the remaining parcel 470, and that would be used for trail access, and there's no access to 471, so, um, color me confused. Again, there was, there was no notification on behalf of the developer that any of this was gonna take place as far as clearing land for, uh, Phase 7, so I mean, if someone had been out on the trail, you know, I mean, if someone were to get injured, uh, you know, based on that notification, that would, that'd be a tragedy. And I mean, again, that's just common experience with, with these people. Also, the, the dwelling units per acre calculation on Table 42, does that include like areas like 470 and 471? Or is that just area that will be, I guess, constructed upon, like have a dwelling on it?
470, 471 should be open.
Open space?
Yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah.
So it's classified as open space, and it's not in the, it does not include no calculations?
Yeah, 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 so, so it's kind of the overall density of like, I, if you just want to finish, then we'll answer your question, I'm sorry.
Just a, like an administrative thing. I believe, like, I don't, I'm not an adjoining person to any, to this particular, this particular phase. So I didn't get notification. The only notification I got was on our Woodward Oaks, uh, Facebook page. I'm just, I would just like to make a suggestion. There's the, um, like Auburn PSD app, and there's a community service, like, feature to it. Maybe if that was utilized to help with notifications, or the e-notifier, I just got a, uh, text this morning from the e-notifier. That would, that would help get the, the word out to folks that, you know, maybe, maybe affected or in the, in the area. Just a suggestion, I'm just, just throwing it out there. And then, you know, based on this meeting, if any of, if any of the comments, or questions, or complaints, whatever they may be classified as, um, will they place, would they place this on hold until there's clarification? Or do we approve and move to city council, and then it's, I don't understand that part of the process?
This before, if it meet, if it meets or exceeds our regulations, then it does stop here, gets approved, and then it goes into more development review team with the city.
All right, sounds good. I think that concludes everything for this, this meeting.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all for this opportunity to come before you and speak. I'm Jessie Shealy, the owner of 1962 Miracle Road. And I come this afternoon to say that I am in support of you all approving this, uh, preliminary plat for Woodward Oaks. Our city is growing. You all are doing a phenomenal job, and I want to move forward and not hinder progress. I, um, but I, I have a concern that I want to bring before you all. And it's my understanding that once 100 homes were built by this developer, that Miracle Road would then be paved. You all are aware that there are more than 100 homes in Woodward Oaks, and our road is still not paved. This is unfortunate, and this is unfair. So I come before you tonight, asking and requesting and pleading that our road, the paving our road, be addressed with the developers. They have the funding. They have the machinery, the equipment. They have the resources. All around us, Sarah Lane is paved. Jamesburg Drive is paved. All around us are paved roads. Miracle Road is still a dirt road. This is unfortunate and unfair. I've had to put two brand new sets. I've had to put two brand-new sets of tires on my vehicle because the gravel on the road, on Miracle Road, has chewed my tires up to kibbles and bits. My struts are gone. My shocks are gone. So every time I hit one of the... Every time I hit one of the ruts in the road, I have no shocks to comfort me in my vehicle. Who wants to drive a gravel road? It is unavoidable. I have to travel the road to get to my home. And it's unfortunate and unfair that the developers have time and time again been given the approval of their development, continued development, and Miracle Road, not paving Miracle Road, not be sufficiently addressed. I'm not here to cause the developers, nor the city, any complications. I'm an outstanding citizen of Auburn, a native of Auburn. My money is contributed to the city of Auburn. So I come tonight to ask you all to place pri- high priority on the pavement of pa- pay, of paving Miracle Road, set it as a stipulation to be carried through and carried out by the developers as part of the approval of this preliminary plat. It's easy to overlook me because I'm small.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, Ms. Shealy, that is the five minutes, but I fully appreciate what you are, what are you telling us tonight.
Thank you again. I value your, um, commitment, and I value the work that you all do.
Thank you.
God bless you all.
Anyone else in the public hearing like to speak on Woodward Oaks? Do you think no one else close the public hearing? Questions, comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so I guess I wanted to address just kinda the comment, just kinda around density. So with PDDs, densities are kinda defined at the outset, and then kinda, as long as they kinda stay in the trajectory of that, then, I mean, that's, then they, they just kinda get approved, just kinda like within the density of it. And so sometimes, like, if, let's say, like, project changes or the finances change, then they will come back, kinda ask for an amendment, like, if they wanna change, whether that be like the housing type. And so this project has had several amendments, but the current phase of phase seven is in trajectory with what the density has been defined for this project. And then just kinda to your point about things currently being, being under construction out there, I think it's phase four and phase five right now are currently under construction. So, so yeah, so there is significant construction going on out there. And then also, just with the phase seven and the continued future development. Yeah, so, but I guess to the density side, like I said, just kinda define that at the outset, and then just kinda with the pace of development, and just kinda how fast people are putting in lots, like I said, I mean, it's just they're kinda working their way through it, so.
Agreed, so we, do I need to call?
Oh, no. Yeah, it's just a... Yeah, so, and so, and so I guess like you have...
It's a pretty bad policy.
So, so I guess kinda, if you, if you have like any, any questions or anything, or you want clarity on the project, I mean, you can, you can call us tomorrow. I'm happy to take time to talk to you, or we can talk after this. Okay.
But, but that brings a point, yeah, to my mind, having to do with often the amenities are the last things installed in the development of a subdivision. They're approved at the same time, but they, that's the last thing that's approved. As we look at our subregs that we're going to revise in the near future, can you look at the feasibility, and I'm not saying it is, to put in there some kind of phasing in the amenities along with the, the development of the, of the subdivision?
I think that's something that, that I think when I talk, talk about, I think the, immediately that comes to my mind, they're gonna say they don't make money on those, and that, I mean, as they, as they try to...
But you've got people out there paying their HOA dues.
We can talk about it. Happy, happy to talk about it. I just imagine there's, there's gonna be pushback, and that's gonna be the line.
You look at the plat, and you see an amenity lot there, and they say it's gonna be a swimming pool, and you say, oh, I'll buy into this subdivision.
It's very different when there's fifteen hundred lots and not twenty-five, or even a hundred.
Right.
On this size of a project.
And this is not the first time we've heard complaints about the amenities with this particular development.
But my bigger question is about the hundred homes. Where was that stated?
And Miracle Road, yeah. Where was that stated? Was it stated?
I don't remember it. What I remember is that Lee Road six seventy-seven, which is a little bit, is just north of where Ms. Shealy lives. Six seventy-seven is going to, hey, no, no, go back.
What, there it is.
Six seventy-seven, okay. Go, go to the MDP, if you don't mind. You can see it on that. Go one more. Six seventy-seven is in the phase four in the green. And it would connect over to, from Miracle over to the development, and then run inside where James Burke Parkway. From what I remember, and I'd have to go back and look and ask the applicant, the portion of Miracle Road that was going to remain, which is from six seventy-seven down to Sarah, would always be dirt road. The city has no plans, but I, I may not be remembering it wrong, so. That's something we can definitely check on.
Why would the city not have any, any plans to pave sometime, streets inside the city limits?
Well, just because the streets inside the limits, inside the city limits and it's dirt, doesn't necessarily mean we pave it.
That would be a wise goal.
Because in this case, Miracle Road is essentially being rerouted through the development. So there would only be a portion that's left that would be dirt.
Between Sarah and six seventy-seven?
Between Sarah and six seventy-seven.
So what about those houses that would be on the unpaid part of Miracle Road? They just get left?
They would stay on the dirt road, yes. We have a few dirt roads around the city. Most recent that we get inquiries is Hillendale, which is near a subdivision you're going to consider, in a little bit.
And does the city maintain those dirt roads?
We do. We do.
They maintain those dirt roads, though.
Yeah, I, I, I know. And there's no problem with the fire trucks coming down that dirt road?
No, ma'am.
Fire trucks can't come down that road.
Have you run a fire truck down there?
Right now, it's, it's under construction, right? It is closed. But we do have a new fire station, so they are actually coming off of
James Burke.
Farm, Farmville Road right now, to access Fire Station Six. Right, it doesn't connect right now, right. It's under construction.
So, but my other question is, and I realize this development, development is not a problem, I'm good with that. But we're on phase four and five that is actual under construction, and we're approving phase seven. Is there any timeline of why we would be moving down? We've already done, you know, five way up here at the other end, too. So is there any connection between why that would be so far ahead of itself, I guess?
That's kinda been the course of this development. They have approved, and Andy might can speak a little bit more to this than I can. They have approved phases well ahead of construction. We've had construction plans approved well ahead of construction. And in my observation, this development has moved very methodically, from my perspective, since they had their master plan approved, and I think they're on track to complete it within the timeframe they initially said. So it's not uncommon, well, I shouldn't say it's not uncommon. It's a little bit uncommon for people to actually plan ahead and get their plats done. It is welcome by staff.
Okay, that was just a...
Yeah.
Okay, pub, pub, public hearing is complete on this. Comments or questions or motions from commissioners? I will move to approve twenty twenty-four zero twenty-three with comments, with comments. Thank you.
Second.
We have a second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So this request is for the annexation of approximately one hundred and sixty-nine point seven acres into the Auburn city limits. The property is located on the south side of Sand Hill Road, also known as Lee Road ten. The subject property is currently, as you can see, outside of the city limits, but would be designated rural amongst annexation approval. However, this property is the subject of the subsequent rezoning request that you'll see for a rezoning to the conservation overlay district, COD. You can see that the property is contiguous to the southeast portion, and also a slight sliver to the north. It is within the optimal boundary and is designated as future land use rural. So with that, the applicant meets all the conditions for annexation of the property, and staff is recommending approval of this request.
Alright, it is an annexation and does not require a public hearing, commissioners?
Move to approve case annexation twenty twenty-four number fourteen with a recommendation for approval to city.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Alright, the second of three requests for this property is for the rezoning of the same one hundred and sixty-nine point seven approximate acres from the rural zoning designation to the conservation overlay district.
I have a quick question. I have a hundred and seventy-two acres were annexed and a hundred and sixty-nine being rezoned?
Yeah, it is a hundred and sixty-nine point seven specifically because the application initially read one hundred and seventy-two point seven until further looks into the legal description, which changed it. It is to the conservation overlay district, just to reiterate, at thirty-eight forty-eight Sand Hill Road. As you can see on this site plan, this is just the conceptual drawing we were given from the applicant. The conservation overlay district would require fifty percent of the acreage of the property to be dedicated and preserved in perpetuity as a conservation open space. And I wanted to show you here that this property that you see in the yellow, which is what we are discussing currently, is just down Sand Hill Road from the Arborwood subdivision, which came through at the February twenty twenty-four meeting, and is of a similar request of a rezoning to the COD district and a preliminary plat for a conservation subdivision. Went too far. Staff is recommending approval of this request. And I do wanna note that this rezoning is, has to be a part of the motion for the preliminary plat that follows. The preliminary plat hinders on whether this be approved or not. Can I answer any questions if you'll have it?
This being a rezoning, does require a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing at this time.
I'm Jim Hildreth. We have family property, approximately a hundred acres. That's about seventy-five feet, if you're looking at the map, just to the left of that zone. So we have some serious concern as to what's happening. I did research the term conservation overlay, and I'm concerned as to what it actually means. I find words in here like, the developer has alternatives to standard development for flexibility as to the development, foster less sprawl space, more efficient, but then it gets on and allows for the cluster of homes. I need to know, are we building the homes in that area to meet the three-acre requirement that the rest of that road has already in place, or is this some kind of modification to that? It's really concerning to me. I know the road's developing. That's not a question. We know it's coming, it's gonna happen, but I just need to know what we have coming. Another issue is that land on the side of that hill, which I think I may have told you, we've been on that property for five generations. So we've got plenty of experience there. Is it gonna have sewage run from the city, or are you gonna have septic tanks? We are downhill from that property, so yeah, it really does kinda make a concern to us. Need to know about feasibility with the road. Are we gonna widen Sand Hill Road, which I apologize earlier for the confusion, the legal name for that is Mim's Trail. That has been Mim's Trail since eighteen hundreds. What do we do with that road? I'm assuming you're planning to put turn lanes in, even if you're not gonna widen it. But for, I believe it was fifty-seven homes, if you consider an average of three cars per house, that's a lot of cars going in and out of that neighborhood. Wondering about how long we're looking at with regards to this. There is a couple of other issues, and I can tell you from family experience, I doubt anybody in this room knows. That property was Myrtle and Charles Seagrist. But before it was Myrtle and Charles, going back in time, it was Thad and Sage Story. Miss Story had, we know of three children born on that property and are buried on that property. I don't know how the city wants to deal with the development of property when we have three graves sit behind that house there. I haven't been on that property in a long time, so I don't know what the status of the property is today, but there is three graves back there. Like I said, not opposed to development, I just need some clear understanding. And I think the developer's here, and I'll give him my phone number, and we can work together if it need be, but I'd just like to know what we're gonna do for certain. If it's approved, is it going to allow for apartment complexes? Where are we going? I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Shari Crowder, and I live on an adjoining property to that also. Was kinda shocked to see, because we bought that property because there was so much acreage behind us. I'm, same question as this gentleman here. I'd like to know what the conservation subdivision's gonna entail. Am I gonna be needing to move out if it becomes too large to, and we all know there's some huge subdivisions in our area. It's gonna affect the wildlife. My family and I, and everyone in my little four-house subdivision, which is very nice and small, we all moved there because of the wildlife and all of the land. So we would like to, hopefully, that it would be conserved. I doubt they're gonna redo their plat, plan, but it would be nice. And if it possible, yes, I would like to know the conservation, how that's gonna work out for us. Thank you.
Please sign in. Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to come forward? Okay, I will close the public hearing at this, at this time. Excellent questions. We have two more agenda items at this time. This is just the rezoning. So the rezoning, can we get clarification on what COD allows?
Great question, yes. So conservation overlay district, I think to, I think to y'all's liking. So if you wanna go to the actual plat, like where they have the lots, I can kinda explain it. There we go.
The concept or to the plat itself?
Yeah, 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 this is good, this is good. Yeah, thanks, yeah, concept. So as you can see, a significant portion of this is green. So stipulation of the conservation overlay district is that fifty percent of the land has to be conserved, and it has to be a conservation instrument, a legal instrument that will prevent development in purp- the land has to be conserved and it has to be a conservation instrument, a legal instrument that will prevent development in perpetuity, period. So for the rest of, so everything that's green there, once there's a conservation easement, once this is approved, um, at the final plat, this will never be developed, cannot be developed. Like, there have to be a permanent conservation easement on it, um, going forward that will restrict development. So everything that's green, just so everything that abuts you, uh, this will say, and so as far as the density goes, in the conservation overlay district, what allows this to happen, these, these will be single-family homes, and so they can get under the three-acre minimum and they can go down um, to a one-acre lot size, which is the minimum in our rural district. But that's because fifty percent of the land that they own has to be in the cons- has to be in the conservation instrument. And so it is a function of the C O D overlay, uh, and this is one of the reasons that people have opted for it. And so it's one of the things that has, has become a bit of a trend out on Sand Hill Road. There's been several, uh, just kind of like the other, um, visual show, there was one recently approved on the other side of Sand Hill Road. But this, like I said, this isn't where they're gonna clearcut and masquerade the entire site and there won't be a tree left. A lot of the, the intent of a lot of these subdivisions is that they want to maintain, they want to maintain the natural features and qualities of the site. So that would be the streams, the trees, and the wildlife. Those, uh, there's a growing interest and uh, market for people who wanna live in homes like that in proximity to that and be more amongst that and not have to, you know, like I said, I mean, live in a regular subdivision where it's clearcut, masqueraded, and then those trees are just as new as the house. And so this is a way to allow that to happen, and this is also a way to preserve the rural character out in our rural um, area that is still within our optimal boundary. And so then to your sewage question, um, I don't, so I know they're not getting water, yeah, yeah, they're not gonna have, yeah, this, yeah, yeah, so it's gonna be septic as well. And so then I assume the applicant can speak to the rest of it, but.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
If y'all have any more questions, y'all can go and ask them. I can answer the sewage question really quickly. It's gonna be septic. We have no sewer anywhere near there, so.
What about the grave site?
Yeah, it's a great question. I'm happy you brought it up, because I was gonna find that sooner or later. We will certainly abide by any regulations around that that we have to do. The, one of the things that I love personally about the conservation district is we have a ton of flexibility in our planning, because we're putting half of it into, like, this will have eighty-eight acres, a pro- give or take, in conservation forever. And so with that, we can really play with a lot of things with the topography of keeping it minimal disturbance. We love that look. We think that it's a great product for the end user and already, it's an awesome place to live. You had, you can go out your back door and you might have, you know, ten football fields of woods between you and a property line. Like, that's fantastic. We love that. Um, I think as far as the grave site goes, if that is an issue, we will work around that. There's, we have plenty of room to plan around it if needed. So we'll have to go there, obviously verify those things. I'll get to on that. Probably not tonight, but tomorrow, and uh, we'll, we'll figure out what that entails and how we're gonna have to mitigate or work around that, um, in that regard.
Okay.
And then, you know, uh, I guess I'd just make a po- a point about the widening of the, of the road. You know, that just depends on density. We do traffic studies. When it needs widening, it gets widened. So, you know, there, people are paying attention to that, so that was the other question.
So
We actually, we actually did the other project that Connor shared as well, and that is under Lee County's jurisdiction. And on that project, they did not require us to do turn lanes. I, I don't know yet if they're gonna require it on this project or not. However, what they required on the last one was in a large radius, just, just for ease of traffic flow. Not exactly the same traffic demands that we're seeing on these other projects we saw today. But still, obviously, we wanna be good neighbors, make sure that traffic's flowing and we're not causing any issues out there.
All right, um, I said, I, I do wanna mention just kind of relevant to this. If we keep annexing property on Sand Hill Road, eventually Sand Hill Road is going to be in the city. So just, just some, some, something to think about, uh, and kind of, you know, just kind of thinking through like the major street plan and just kind of like the implications of that, of like the timeline of when that would come into the city, and then just kind of what those upgrade would mean. Or what those upgrades would mean, whether that be turn lanes, expansions, extra right-of-way, et cetera. And so there, there is a threshold that, that eventually the county would come to us and ask us to take the road. So just something to think about.
Any other questions, commissioners? Staff or applicant?
Back to his question there, or his point he made regarding the way the, this, this plan is drawn, there will be access for wider ri- widening the right-of-way if you have to.
Yes.
Okay. So you don't have to set any, any standards of where you, how, how close to the road he can be other than what we already have?
Right, for anything that's along the proposed outer loop, we do require, um, at least ten feet of additional right-of-way.
And is that on the outer, okay?
Yes, if I'm not mistaken, it is.
I don't, I don't know if that was actually in this plan, but we'll get, we can get that in.
Well, this is just a rezoning.
That's, that's true.
Correct.
I can answer it in three minutes.
Let's do that.
Sure.
Um, so this is just the rezoning, if you have any other questions on that. Okay, commissioners? Motion?
Move to approve rezoning case twenty twenty-four zero zero five Wrightwood Hills.
Second.
For motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank, any opposed? Thank you. Now we'll have the preliminary plat. We'll welcome you back in a minute.
All right, the third and final request for this property is a request for preliminary plat approval for a fifty-seven lot conservation subdivision. Specifically fifty-six of those lots will be single-family residential lots, and one will be the conservation open space lot. So you can see here how it's configured, similar to the concept plan, a lot of the open space is gonna be around the border of the property. And it's gonna take up fifty percent of the total acreage of the property. Staff is recommending approval of this preliminary plat request with comments. Two, uh, planning comments specifically to note is that first, uh, two things will be required before preliminary plats are middle. The first is an instrument of permanent protection to the conservation area, um, to dedicate it and to conserve it in perpetuity. And that's required before final plat submittal, as well as the open space maintenance plan that the applicant is aware that both are required. Um, other than that, I can answer any other questions y'all may have.
Water service is not provided is a comment, so they'll get that on their own.
Yes, I believe it's
Borogard, yeah.
Borogard water, okay, not well, it's okay.
Okay. Thank you. This is preliminary plat, and it does require a public hearing, so I would like to open that now. If anyone would like to speak on the public hearing anymore?
If I may, I just wanna make, again, my name's Jim Hildreth, thirty-five hundred Sand Hill Road. My comments from before, I wanna make sure they carry over to this motion as well, if you would please.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes. Waited so patiently all night.
Hey, my name's, uh, Will Chappell, eight nine nine eight Hillendale Road. Property hits on a single point, right there about halfway on the, the east side. Not a super big concern. I'm all for growth and everything. Just wanna know, is there any flexibility? Because this is a preliminary plat approval before it goes to final plat, will that change at all? That vision?
It's potential for it to.
In what capacity?
Possible.
Yeah.
It won't be significant.
Yeah, I guess if you just wanna finish your comments, I can answer it.
Yeah, yeah, so the, I guess for clarification on my question, is there ever gonna be those lots swing over to the edges of the property and the conservation piece be in the center? So that the adjoining properties are then hindered or, um, you know, adjusted, how, uh, what's the word?
Buffer, buffer, there we go.
Yeah. Anyways, that's why I wanna know if that's gonna be the final view, instead of just making a U shape around the outside of that property, so then all of the other properties are affected. That's it.
Thank you. Public hearing? Anyone else? Okay, close the public hearing. I say that because of the graves were one of the reasons it may shift a little, and there's wetlands, right?
Yeah, so, 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 yeah, so there are, so there are streams and creeks, but I guess kind of to, I wanna answer Mr. Hildreth's, uh, point. So this is, these are single-family lots, these aren't gonna be multi-unit developments, it's gonna be single-family. So then to the other part, so preliminary plats, they're normally working, working documents. And so if there's any complications, whether that be graves, you know, issues with utilities or, um, other issues, just kind of the grading, and some don't work, and like, once they get on site and there's like an excessive amount of rock or something, they need to change the design, that is subject to happen. But oftentimes, a preliminary plat is largely reflective of what the final plat's going to be unless there's like significant changes that come through. So like I kind of mentioned earlier, uh, we work out a lot of the granular details, uh, once we get into D R T. And so that sometimes, I mean, sometimes it's a month's process, sometimes it's a multiple year process. Uh, and like I said, I mean, it really just kind of depends on what are some of the obstacles that they encounter on the site. And so I wouldn't, I wouldn't imagine that this would change too much, and I think also kind of with the conservation overlay district. Uh, and like, you know, the applicant mentioned, I mean, the feature of this and the appeal of this is the access to the open space, I mean, the direct access. And so I think that buffer is a two-way street, not just something that you would want, but also something that they would want as well, that they wanna, um, give to their clients or give to their, you know, market. So, um, to answer your question, yes, but I wouldn't imagine that it would change too significantly unless something was to go seriously awry, so.
And it previously been, been
Yeah.
Our policy that if it changes significantly, the staff brings it back to the planning commission, we'll rehear it, if it's a significant change.
Yep.
And we hear it all again.
Yeah. Okay. Public hearing has been closed. Commissioners? Move to approve PP twenty twenty-four zero one eight with comments. And it's contingent on city council approval. Second. Oh, I'm on that, I'm on the preliminary plat. Of the rezoning, I'm sorry. Listen, can, will you restate that, please, ma'am? Move to approve twenty twenty-four zero one eight with comments, which is contingent on the city council approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you all very much. That is our last item on the agenda for the evening. Do we have other business? Chairman's communication, staff communication?
Yeah, 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 I, I actually do. So, uh, two things, so I'll, I'll go, I'll go with the minor one, I guess, probably the, um, long-lasting one. So, uh, actually, we welcomed a new planner on staff, uh, several weeks ago, uh, Rindam Roy. I meant to introduce him at the packet meeting, but we just kind of got rolling pretty fast. I was just kind of enjoying lunch. Um, so Rindam, he'll be, he'll be working with us. Uh, y'all will be seeing him. He'll, he didn't have any cases this month, but he'll have cases next month. So I have to present everyone. Um, looking forward to working with him, very talented, like Rindam a lot. Yeah, so, that, so then, secondly, um, one of the things that, that I kind of wanna talk about, and I guess we can kind of talk about it on Monday. I, you know, this kind of came up on, on another project of, um, initially, you know, there were no minimums for something, and then we found the minimum. Currently, preliminary plats are working documents, and, you know, we approve them with SAP comments. But I think tonight, like you kind of outlined, Phil, forty-three might be too many comments to approve with. And I think kind of, you know, it's something that we kind of need to think through, we're kind of hamstrung by the bylaws, because if you say no to something, then it can't come back for a year. And so unless there's, is significant change, so then we would need to kind of think through, do we allow for the rejection of preliminary plats and then come back on the, on a subsequent agenda? And then after they get told no twice, do we send them away for a year? Um, but I think that's something that we kind of need to contemplate, because I think also kind of from staff's side, um, there is immense frustration when they, when we do have to send something with a lot of comments. Uh, whether that be engineering G I S comments or the planning side, um, there are several projects where we get through and there's pages and pages of comments. And then it's either exhaustion or it's, you know, well, I, I guess we'll just work through this somehow. But I, I think that, that frustration is shared, and I think that's something that we can probably figure out, because I, I, I do think, you know, and, and I guess the issue is on that is, how many times are we gonna review something? How much is it, are, are we gonna do your work for you of kind of outlining, okay, here are all the changes that you need to do? Like, I mean, why are you not bringing us finished products? Um, so I think that is something that we probably need to think about, that we can kind of think through on the subdivision regs, and we also kind of look at, uh, the process of them in the bylaws, uh, possibly to put us in a better position to say no to things, that way we can get finished products, that way you can approve things with confidence. And it's not like, well, this just goes into the hopper, and then maybe they fit, figure this out in eighteen months, or they don't.
Alabama law is so specific that puts us in a box.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They have thirty days. We can't even table it to the following meeting if it's more than thirty days from the time they file.
Well, well, correct, correct, but, but the bind on that is that Alabama law does not say that we can't rehear something in like another month if we say no to it, but it's just you, we have to act on it.
Act on.
Right, right, right. And so I'm saying, I mean, it wouldn't be a bad thing if we did act on it and the answer was no, but we allowed it on preliminary plats for them to come back, like with them addressing some of their comments. Like I said, I, I think tonight we did find the maximum of comments that we're probably uncomfortable with.
But our subdivision regs are quite specific.
It's not the most.
No.
It's not.
Subdivision are quite specific, subregs are quite specific. They know what we need to have.
Oh, we agree. They, they definitely know.
And so, you know, that, that's on them, too.
Yeah.
Motion for a dent.
We don't need to do their work, you're right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, 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 yeah, I, I think that's something we can probably talk about Monday, but I think also that's probably something that we'll have to work through legal. Uh, just 'cause I, I, I know, like I said, on the, we had to come up with Cafe Eraser, but I think it's something that we'll probably have to look through on the bylaws of, you know, if, once we say no to something, can we, do we go back and like give it a month? And then, then come back like a second time, like without having to go through like, like that year wait time period. But I, I do agree, I think tonight, I think we did find the maximum on co- of approval with comments, so. All right, that's it. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, move to adjourn.
To adjourn.
We, all's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, bye.